To the regular April ninth, two thousand fourteen, school committee meeting. All members are present, Linda, except for Mrs. Barnish, who's unable to be here due to illness. Okay. Our first item is going to be the items by consensus. Mrs. Benton.
Good evening, everyone. We have nine items on the consent agenda for approval. Approval of the minutes of March twelfth, regular session, approval of the minutes of March thirty-first, special meeting, approval of out-of-state trip for Shashi third grade to New Hampshire, approval of out-of-state field trip to high school band to Disney World, warrants G four-ten, G four-eleven, G four-twelve, R two-fourteen, R two-fifteen, R two-sixteen, L thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight, payroll three-twelve and three-twenty-six, warrants C B oh-eight and C B oh-nine, warrants sped eighteen and nineteen, and warrants food service fourteen.
Okay. My favorite part of the evening. We're gonna try something a little different. I'm gonna have you look down numbers one through five, and I assume that we have no -- do we have any problems on one through five of people? Which number?
I don't feel I can approve -- I need to abstain from at least the minutes of May twelve, uh, March twelfth.
Okay.
Due to the superintendent search advisory committee, we, Paul and I, had left for the better part of that meeting, so.
Oh, okay. Alright, so numbers two through five, we take, uh, yes. Whatever.
Make a motion to approve items two to five S. Said.
Second, Mrs. Carroll, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Oh, no, sorry.
I forgot, sorry. Sorry, I have to stay from, from the table.
Even if you weren't here, you can do it.
You can vote it.
You can vote it.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. We're doing this, okay. Unanimous, Linda. Alright, payroll warrant, could we have a motion to, to, um, approve the payroll warrant?
I make a motion to approve the payroll warrants for weekending March twelfth, two thousand fourteen, and March twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen.
Good, thank you. Second, Mrs. Burns, all those in favor? Four in favor, two abstain, Linda, thank you. And warrants C B oh-eight, C B oh-nine. I'm thinking those. Yeah. Dr. Quick.
Make a motion to approve warrants C B oh-eight and C B oh-nine.
Okay, oh, the second, Mrs. Busad, he ended up best. All those in favor? Five in favor, one abstain. All right, sped warrants eighteen and nineteen, will take a motion for those. Mrs. Busad.
Make a motion to approve warrants sped eighteen and sped nineteen.
And the second, Dr. Quick, all those in favor? Five in favor, one abstain, and warrants F S food service fourteen. Mrs. Burns, it's your move. And the second, all those in favor? Five and one abstain. Thank you, very nice. We did it. Alright, our next item is Jocelyn Ferraro, our student representative, welcome. Good to see you again.
Good to see you too. It's Ferraro, actually.
Excuse me, thank you, Paul.
Alright, we took out number one, approval of minutes, so we have to go back. I'll abstain a motion for approval of the minutes of March twelfth. Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve minutes of March twelfth, regular session.
Second, Mrs. Carroll, all those in favor? Five in favor and one abstain. Okay. Thank you, thank you, alright. Now, we're back to Jocelyn.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Um, there hasn't been much going on here, but, um, quarter four began on Monday, and the history fair is taking place tonight. Uh, the jazz band concert is tomorrow at the Wilmington Middle School, and a lot of people are excited for this. Junior prom is on Friday at the Tuxbury Country Club, and the National Honor Society induction ceremony will be taking place May first. That's it.
Very good, thank you. And I understand you're a sophomore?
Yes.
With that, great. Are you, um, going to be with us maybe next year?
Yep.
Excellent.
Hopefully I have someone else with me, too.
Good, that's fine, great. It's good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next item is the superintendent search committee. We're not switching seats or anything. Mrs. Busad will update us all on that.
Alright, I'm gonna take a sigh of relief, everybody get comfortable, there's a lot to share. And before I get started, I think I want to take a moment and acknowledge, when we made the announcement of the finalists on Monday, the thirty-first, things became very real for me personally. All of a sudden, there were real people involved, it wasn't just dates on a timeline. Um, I don't know about the rest of you, but emotions have been running really high, my anxiety level is through the roof. We all recognize how important this decision is, and how many steps are involved, but I have to say, I'm real optimistic about where we're at right now. I do see a light at the end of the tunnel, I think we've got three great candidates to consider. Um, I'm very optimistic about the direction we're going in, but I do think we just all need to trust ourselves, and let's let the process work. If we get to next Thursday, and it's only a week and a day away, take a breath, and if this is not the right direction for our school and for our children, then we need to keep going, okay? But I'm, I'm very optimistic about where we're going. Alright, with that being said, I've shared some information with you by email, and I've also passed out some logistics and planning information. Um, we've had a productive week already, and it's only Wednesday. On Tuesday, there was a site visit to meet Dr. Mary Lou Bergeron in her home district of Lawrence. Today, we had some of us go to Chelmsford to meet Mr. Michael Lacava, and on Friday, we will be visiting Mrs. Mary Delay in Reading, and we get the weekend off. And on Monday, bright and early, we will be meeting at the Roman House to discuss the site visits, and also do a little planning for next week. The public are welcome to everything, okay? So, on Tuesday, that's a week from yesterday, we will be having Dr. Mary Lou Bergeron join us for the day in Wilmington, um, with her capstone of the evening being her final interview at seven o'clock. On Wednesday, on April sixteenth, we have Mr. Michael Lacava spending his day in Wilmington, with the final interview being at seven. And on Thursday, April seventeenth, Mrs. Mary Delay will spend her final day in Wilmington with her interview at seven. Um, I'm also gonna take a few minutes to go over kinda what the plan is for those days. The candidates will be coming to Wilmington bright and early, eight o'clock in the morning, they're going to be spending some time at the Roman House with Mrs. Benton and her staff. They will also meet with the principals and assistant principals, the athletic director, the cares coordinator, the food service director, and the head nurse. They will have an opportunity to have a tour of all of our buildings. We will have lunch, and then the afternoon will be met with meeting the school staff. We're actually building in a little bit of downtime for them, 'cause I think they're gonna need it. Um, we will have a dinner for them, and then at six o'clock, this would be great for the public to join us here in this room, we're going to have an informal candidate reception, with an opportunity for parents and the members of the community to come in and get to know these candidates, ask a few questions, maybe share a little feedback that might be helpful for us to make our decision. And then each evening will be capped with the final interview at seven o'clock, okay? So we have a very busy week next week, nobody gets sick on us, please. The other thing I'm going to pass around, and I have given people a heads up, is we wanna make sure that these candidates feel comfortable while they're here with us in Wilmington, we don't wanna just leave them hanging to figure out things by themselves. So I'm going to ask for all of us to work it into our schedules to help them out as the day goes along, so I'm just gonna pass this around. The other thing that I will say about it is that even if somebody's name is there, please, come by at whatever point during the day works for your schedule. I think for school committee members, it would be great if we could have a handful of us there for the lunch, the dinner, the candidate reception, and then we're all gonna be here for the interviews. Okay? Any questions, concerns?
I think at this point, for Kathleen and myself, I'd just like to say that the State Ethics Commission said that anything that the public is able to do as far as the search is concerned, we can participate in. We cannot put together, we cannot be in the search committee, which we were not, and we cannot work on a contract with the person. So we just want to let people know that you'll see us around this next week doing things. And, thank you. And, so we're, we are able to do, help with the tours. The rest of the people have been so overburdened, it's incredible, and not a complaint out of them. I reiterate what Julie said, they've been one, no, those are complaints. They were like, "Help." But they've worked so hard, given up time at work to do this, taking it so seriously, and, and I know Kathleen and I say once in a while to each other, kind of a happy we didn't have to do it, but on the other hand, you've done such an outstanding job, and we'll say this more afterwards, but, um, I really appreciate everything you've done on behalf of the town.
Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. I just wanna make a little quick comment, I've been fortunate, it's a whole new learning process, which I, um, for myself, and I've had the pleasure of going on tour of the site visits with Mr. Mullis and Dr. Quick, and enjoyed very much the learning experience with beginning this process, and I, and I really have to echo, um, your comments pertaining to, um, to have faith and to really put it in the process, 'cause as I find in going through this new learning experience, that the process is working, and it's easing up on my own anxiety with that question piece. And I have to say, um, that I have a whole new snapshot of what a superintendent goes through in a period of a day, and, because I gotta tell you, by two-thirty, three o'clock, which is when these site visits end, I'm mentally and physically exhausted by the process, and, um, so I, I'm only, um, looking forward to seeing how each of our candidates finish their visits to Wilmington next week, 'cause I feel that'll, I'm, I'm very, believe me, I'm very impressed, and I think I have pretty good stamina, but.
It's gonna be a, uh, it's gonna be a long day for them, so we'll, we'll see how they can handle us here in Wilmington. Alright.
Thank you.
That's what I have to say? Can we all say what? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Alright. So, here we go. Our next item of business, superintendent's report.
I have three items on the superintendent's report. First is, um, some important dates coming up, if you're going to be attending the National Honor Society induction, could you please let, um, Amanda know or Mary Lou? The, um, we're all looking forward to Friday night's junior prom, the Tuxbury Country Club, my, um, middle school technology fair on April seventeenth. For, as long as I've been in Wilmington, this has been going on, it's, um, part of the Dave Panett and Kevin Walsh, uh, engineering class, the Analog used to come in and work with the students, Chuck Kitchen, who is now retired from Analog, we wouldn't let him retire unless he committed to coming back to the middle school, really puts this day together, and I strongly encourage all of you to stop in during the day, it's amazing to see. And as far as I'm concerned, that class is the model for STEM education, and Wilmington's been doing it a long time, for a long time, and is way ahead of the, um, the curb as far as Massachusetts, uh, educational STEM, so kudos to the middle school, and I hope you can stop in. I know it's a very busy day, but whoever's bringing the candidate around should bring them upstairs to that class.
Absolutely.
Um, pleased to announce that the Wilmington Educat-
This just came, so I didn't know that, 'cause it's the same date.
Also, the science, uh, STEM fair is going on May first, uh, from six-thirty to eight-thirty at the, uh, middle school cafeteria, so you can go to that before going to the National Society. Excuse me, it starts at six, so there's plenty of time.
Thank you.
Uh, pleased to announce and thank the Wilmington Educational Foundation for the granting this year six grants to Wilmington educators, it's the educator exploration grant, this is allowing some of our staff to really follow their dreams, the, uh, this year, the applicants were so impressive, um, thanks to Dr. Quick, who chaired the committee, uh, we were able to get the foundation to increase their budget, uh, 'cause normally they give, um, three thousand dollars to seventy-six hundred dollars. So our high school visual arts teacher, Megan Hinman, will be traveling to Africa, studying ceramics. Uh, Kelly Torphy, kindergarten teacher at Botwell, will be traveling to, uh, to Galway and taking a, a class in Irish educational system at the National University of Ireland. Jen Fiddler, uh, visual arts teacher and high school English teacher, Lisa Belivie, will be traveling to London to participate in Shakespeare's life, getting to know Shakespeare, they're hoping to bring Shakespeare back to life in Wilmington by combining a visual arts class and an English class. Uh, middle school music teacher Julie Kelly, who's also one of our technology teachers, is going to attend the Google Teacher Academy, and will come back with many ideas for her Wilmington University classes that she has done a phenomenal job with this year. And lastly, our high school social studies teacher Steve Lynch will be traveling to Atlanta, Georgia, to, uh, as part of the Civil War Trust, to follow the, um, the steps of Union General Sherman, um, as he marched into sea. And this experience, last year, he, um, attended, um, a different one in Gettysburg, and was so, had gotten a grand prize, and was so profoundly taken by what he learned and brought back to this class, that he wants to go back this year to the Atlanta, Georgia one. So congratulations to all of those teachers, they're phenomenal experiences, remind the school committee, um, one of the best, uh, meetings is the one in October in the evening, when they will come back to present to all of you. A huge, huge thank you to the foundation for, um, increasing their budget, and thank you, Dr. Quick. Lastly, I was asked by the chairman to put this topic on the agenda this evening, which is school discipline incidents at the middle school, and in a minute now, I'm gonna invite, um, the middle school administration and our school resource officer, Anthony Fury, to come up and join us for, for this, to answer any of your questions. I think it's now three weeks ago, unfortunately, in the, um, one of the local newspapers, in the police report, it was reported that a Wilmington student was arrested outside the middle school, and unfortunately, that caused a lot of ants in the community. Took me a day with the help of, um, Officer Fury to find out what exactly was going on, and we found out that in fact, it was an error, it was a student from another community that was arrested in front of the middle school. But that, along with, um, some incidents at the middle school and lots of rumors, has caused some ants in the community, and I understand that. I do wanna point out in this chart that you see, this is the chart of the school discipline incidents at the middle school, that the incidents at the middle school have gone down since two thousand six, except for one year. In two thousand six, there were a hundred and sixty-six total student suspensions, in two thousand seven, ninety-three, two thousand eight, eighty-five, two thousand nine, one nineteen, two thousand ten, ninety-one, two thousand eleven, forty-five, two thousand twelve, forty-five, and as of March thirty-first, eleven. This data is, is important, because it talks about the different offenses that are, are happening. I will be glad to present the data for the high school as well. Um, I'd like to put this in context, because as you know, there is a new bill that has been passed that ha, that will be implemented, um, on July first, which will not allow any of the schools to expel students. And this is gonna be a major change in the way we handle discipline in Wilmington. In order to suspend a child, we must provide them with an education, and previous to that, if it was a felony or, we did not have to do that. So the state of how one handles discipline is gonna put a real burden on the schools. The, um, school system is gonna have to decide how we handle students as far as providing education, whether we do it in school or at another place. We're working with the scene collaboratively to look at, um, providing online classes for these students, um, because frankly, some students should not be coming back into the schools, especially at the, um, high school level. So it, it puts a burden on the schools. The, what is probably my biggest struggle, and sometimes I think I do a better, a good job, sometimes not so, not as well, is what to communicate to the public. As you know, these are all student records, student records are not allowed to be discussed, it's confidential information, so as much as we want to get information out to the community, we have to protect the rights of all the students in this school district, and therefore, as much as people may talk about and, and put out names, um, we cannot do that. The, the, we try our best to inform the public when a major event happens in this school district through Connect Ed. We learned this year, and it was a wonderful recommendation, when we had an incident at the middle school and had to evacuate, we happened to use the Connect Ed, um, electronic mail notification, and a parent made a great recommendation, and said, "You know, during work, I don't check my emails, please do the call." As you all know, Robert Appoloni chairs a safety committee, we meet once a month with police officers, fire department, uh, principals of all the schools, and we review all of our safety protocols. This includes not only evacuation of buildings because of, um, fires or, um, electricity emergencies, but also of, um, intruders into the buildings, as well as how we handle when a student is, needs to be taken out by an ambulance in all the schools, we have protocols in place to, to protect all students, to keep the identity and the privacy of a student as much as possible, and we take this work seriously. Unfortunately, as in all communities, rumors spread, and from that newspaper article, I have heard all kinds of stories about things going on in the middle school that are not going on in the middle school. I wanna commend the middle school staff and Officer Fury, uh, it's a hard job, tracking down rumors, I can tell you, two weeks ago, the principal of the high school and I spent an entire weekend tracking down the identity of a Twitter page that was put out, that was, um, had references to a, to a teacher. We take this, these actions seriously, and we do all that we can to protect the staff and the students. The, um, the fact that social media is dealing with us today, is with us today, has added layer upon layer upon layer of time to try and figure out, because of the fact that it's anonymous, a lot of it, and it takes us hours and hours and hours to figure out the identity. It took us an entire day to get that Twitter page down. That being said, we want to protect all students, and I want to say that the majority of students in the Wilmington public schools are great kids, they're wonderful students. We have some students, good students, that make poor judgments and make mistakes, and we need to figure out how to handle that, because it is my belief that a young student's life should not be destroyed if they make a poor, a bad judgment. We need to help them figure out how to handle it. On April thirtieth, we, uh, thanks to Principal McMiniman, we will be sponsoring an evening with, uh, a representative from the Middlesex District Attorney's Office to talk to parents and staff about technology and social media, and how to help our stu, our children use it correctly. And I'm hoping that the entire community comes out to the middle school for this. There are too many instances where students are making bad decisions, that are ending up hurting other students, as well as, as teachers, and this is unacceptable. It is not in our nature to be dealing with unbelievably poor language being used on the internet by our students. It is, it turns my stomach when I read some of the things that are, that are going on. We cannot do this job alone, and we need the parents and the community to support us. Fortunately, in Wilmington, and the next superintendent, um, I, I will tell them, is gonna get a gift because of the relationship we have with the Wilmington Police Department. Our school resource officers are not sitting in offices all day long, they are working with us, getting to know students, following down leads with assistant principals, um, opening their offices to students who have issues, and that is, is a bonus that this community has, year upon year funded, where communities, um, surrounding communities have, have had a cut because of the budget. It is most important for all of us to work together to deal with these issues. That being said, I understand that you have some questions, and I'd like to invite the middle school administration up to the table, and we will try and answer those questions. And Officer Fury, to bring some chairs up.
One of the things I would like to first, however, before we start, is to couch this discussion a little bit, and some parameters. Um, we, we're constantly saying that our role as school committee is to make sure that we have strong policies and have them, um, make it so that the administration can follow those policies under the leadership of Superintendent Benton. And we have a policy, School Committee Powers and Duties, and there are two items of the policy that I wanted to read to people, so you'd know that we really do have a responsibility when, when, um, some of the things that have happened recently to us as members of this board, um, we do have a responsibility to follow through and try and, you know, see how we can help get things going back on track if there needs to be. It says appraisal, the committee is responsible for evaluating the effectiveness of its policies and their implementation. The second one is public relations, the committee is responsible for providing adequate and direct means for keeping the local citizenry informed about the schools, and for keeping itself and the school staff informed about the needs and wishes of the public. This year, for whatever reason, we all as school committee members have been approached at different times in different ways by parents, by staff, by, um, kids, students, next-door neighbors, commenting on things that they're seeing happening, or they're feeling or not feeling, and, um, that's never really happened before since I've been on here. And so it's gotten to the point where we really would like to offer our help if we need to redo some policies, but we really would also like to make sure that, um, some of what we're hearing is not happening, and so we're not, this is not to blame the middle school for anything. I'm with Mrs. Benton, one of the things that bothers me the most is, before you can even say something, for instance, the, um, principal, for Miss McMiniman can say anything to her staff, probably two-thirds of your school, which they're not supposed to have, our policy is, they do not have access to their phones in school, they're not supposed to be able to use them, but we all know, it's out in the neighborhood, because they've already twist, they've, no, tweeted. Tweeted, thank you, Robert. They've already tweeted their home, and then their mothers start tweeting each other. It's the most amazing thing to watch, and it's causing us a lot of problems. So I'm, I'm gonna stop there for now, and I'm going to see if, if, um, anyone would like to be specific, or, oh, not specific to names, just to incidents or something, or concerns that they've, that have been raised to them, so does anyone else want to, want to start? Mrs. Burns?
I'll start, uh, more clarifying information and asking questions of the data that we've I'm happy to see the numbers up to this point, and I know that, that the numbers prior to March thirty-first are only partial, and I'm sure these reflect a whole year, school. It's a bit of a dramatic drop, which I'm surprised to see and happy to see, don't get me wrong, but, um, in that aspect, and I don't know if there is any rhythm with regards to when you see more, and forgive me if I'm not using the right verbiage, acting out aspects, you know, like the end of the school year can kinda gear 'em, gear 'em up, or even right before breaks. That's one question I had. The other aspect, and Superintendent Benton was kind enough to, um, give me the statistics with regards to the number of bullying incidences that have been reported, and those that have been acted on as bully, bullying, actual bullying pieces, and forgive me, my phone is in my car, so I don't have that data, if you could share that with the rest of the community, I'd appreciate that, as well as a definite, definition, 'cause I think a clarification of that, 'cause it's a very tricky area of the disciplinary piece that you all need to, um, muddle through. And if, if you could speak to those two aspects at this point- And if, if you could speak to those two aspects at this point, I greatly appreciate. I'm sorry, they're two different questions.
Sure, no, they're definitely right on target, because in a proactive manner, you know, when Officer Fiore came on board, he has had, obviously, an adjustment period in getting to know the school, getting to know the students, and I'd say about a month ago, three weeks to a month ago, I had said to him, okay, we're, we're heading into the home stretch, and springtime is coming, and the weather is going to change, and we tend to see more incidents occur in the springtime with regard to discipline. And so I had asked him to now take a more proactive role, to be visible in the hallways, to be visible in between periods, to be visible in stairwells, et cetera. And so he has really been very responsive to that right away, and it's been a great help with his visibility in the building. So I would say, to answer your question, that we do tend to have a quieter time, I guess at the beginning of the school year, typically, sort of September, October, November, and just before maybe Christmas vacation, or just before February vacation, sometimes students do tend to act out, and we certainly see an increase in the spring, just as a, as a matter of a trend, you know? The, the numbers certainly have dropped dramatically, and I think that many of the students know that there are repercussions for behavior and for choices that they make. They certainly are held accountable if they bring something to school that does not belong in school. They certainly are held accountable if they act out physically. So those types of things do tend to escalate during the spring.
And I think that leads into the second question that I posed to you with regards to the accountability, because I think, and I know I've heard from different, let's put it stakeholders, for lack of a better term, because they come from a variety of different positions in the district, is that, and I take it carefully, not black and white, if I can be, clarify that piece, that it's the disciplinary piece that seems to be a great concern of many with regards to how certain things are addressed, because it seems to be an influx, you know? Similar situations handled differently, but those situations not different enough to warrant different responses. And if I, if I'm clear, please feel free to ask me a question.
Well, I think, I think that, I think that you bring up a good point with regard to consistency. And we have a behavior rubric that's pretty black and white, actually, in the handbook. And, you know, students and parents sign off on the handbook at the beginning of the school year, and as the administrative team, we certainly look to that handbook when we have an offense, and we've investigated properly, and we have a true sense of what occurred in an incident, and we act appropriately using the rubric, based on whether it was the first offense, second offense, or third offense here. So that allows us to be consistent. I think that it's concerning if people who are perhaps staff members, or perhaps students, or perhaps parents, think that it's not handled consistently, because we certainly do use this book as our guide, and we refer to it very frequently when we're dealing with parents whose, whose child may have had an infraction. Just to go on to that point, even, even earlier to Chairperson Kane's point about policy, you know, an example is where we feel a policy is appropriate, extremely appropriate, is when we have perhaps a drug offense, and students may be in possession of drugs in the school building. Huge offense, very serious. School committee policy and the district-wide policy is a suspension for eight days, and if the parent and the student come in and make an appointment with the administration within the first four days of that suspension, and come up with a plan that may involve counseling, interventions, working with the school on a plan to steer the student in the right direction, then that suspension is reduced to four days. So it is very similar to what Mrs. Benton said earlier. Yes, it is punitive. There is a consequence for your choices and actions, however, it is also educational, and hoping that the student learns and does not repeat the same mistake again, because it is a serious offense. One of the other questions that came up a little bit during the week was, perhaps in the suspension rate last year, are there some repeat offenders that came up and are part of the suspensions this year? And there is overlap. Right now, looking at those numbers in per our review, there are three students in our building currently that are repeat offenders. Some of the students last year in the 45 suspensions are currently at the high school. I can't speak to the high school records, but perhaps some of those students are repeat offenders.
I, I can concur with that, because I see every week sign off on every suspension report, and the names are similar.
Can I, and that's a great point. Can I ask you additional question to that point?
Sure.
Because I don't, I wa, I think it's important, though, too, to clarify the bullying definition. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm going to get to those numbers, too, sure.
Seeing that they are repeat offenders, what steps have, has, I, I'm curious, because I just, I, I want to see what the process is with regards to maybe recognizing possible additional supports and resources that expand within, within what we offer our students, as well as out, I mean, you know the circumstances better, so you know the level of need, I guess. Are those resources being exercised, and even with Officer Fiore as a mentor to a lot of these students, too? What type of resources are, are they being utilized, first off? Are you looking for additional resources beyond the consequence aspect of the infraction for those students who are repeat offenders? I mean, what?
Well, we, we do have, you know, counseling resources in place. We do have, obviously, Officer Fiore as a mentor. I think part of our response is building relationship with students, especially those students who are at risk, repeat offenders. And, and each of the administrators here, along with myself, we, we work to build relationships with those students who are in need, so that if they are experiencing difficulty, whether it's academic, or emotional, or social, that they would then come to an administrator, or perhaps a counselor, or Officer Fiore, if they needed assistance, needed guidance, had a conflict that they wanted to resolve, and to do it positively so that they did not get into trouble again. So we have those resources in the building, where we're using counselors, school resource officers, teachers, and administrators to try and carve a better path for those students.
Well, that's, that's the, the issue that I, I am concerned, and I think it's, I need more clarification, as coming to, as opposed to reaching out. There's a big difference in that aspect, because, especially in the social, emotional aspect. The inability to be able to communicate effectively at times of angst, depending upon where that source comes from, that's not so forthcoming. So as opposed to, time is, is a huge factor in these students' lives, as the academic pieces as well. Sometimes that proactiveness with noticing it, you know, and building those relationships and noticing a child who has, has the inability to be able to reach out to the administration for support, it's actually accessing it and saying, look, you know, would you be, I know that we were, the policy committee just entertained, I mean, changed at the high school level that we're piloting with regards to those type of interventions, with regards to substance abuse. And I think, I know that'll be eventually rolled out to the middle school area as well. I think reaching out to those students sometimes saves a great deal of amount of time, and I think, in the long run, in that proactiveness, have the ability to get them back on the path that we'd all like for them to, to get to. And, and I think that's, forgive me if I wasn't clarifying, those are the type of resources with regards to reaching out in that.
And I, I would, I would like to praise the teachers in our building, who, who do an awful lot of reaching out. When they have a student that they feel needs mentoring, needs more supervision, they build in time after school with them. I have teachers who are volunteering after school on their own time, because a group of students wants to play basketball, let's say, in the gym. So they have the students come, and they supervise, so that they are in the gym for an hour after school, instead of perhaps walking outside, down to the plaza, and perhaps getting into things that they shouldn't be getting into. So that is a big piece of the, of the proactive reaching out piece.
Thank you. And the, Middlesex Alliance.
Coming in.
District Attorney's Office provides support and programs as well to the, to all the schools. Margie Daniels is the executive director that helps us out, as well as the court group that you.
The juvenile probation?
Yeah.
And the start team, sure. That's for attendance intruency. And, and to tell you the truth, we do a lot of programming ahead of time to be proactive, with substance abuse programming, with bullying prevention, and, and we've done those this year as well. And that sometimes sparks a conversation between a counselor and a student that might be having some difficulty, because they may have seen something in an enrichment program or an assembly program that may start the conversation, and usually it starts there.
On the practical side, could I ask you two things? One of them is, if a teacher comes and has a problem with a student, in my school, you wrote it down on a card. The card went to, like Mr. Sheen, the submaster, and then he wrote on it, he had, they had like two days to get it back to us. They wrote on it what the disposition of the discipline was, and sometimes it was, wasn't any, but they wrote on it to let you know. And so we kept a copy, they kept a copy. So we knew how many kids were, we were dealing with in our own classes, and then the school knew on each floor how many kids. So I don't know if you do, have a written process. How do you let the teachers know when, when they've told you there's something wrong with the student, hasn't been behaving? How do they tell you that? And then how do you get back to them as to what's happened?
Well, we do have a discipline form. I would, I would agree that not every teacher uses it consistently. Some teachers just use an email, or an in-person conversation, and will come down and say, this student is being difficult in my classroom, they were disruptive, perhaps, and I've spoken to the parent, I've kept the student after school. If, if they are disruptive again, I'm going to send them down to you and refer them to your office. So that certainly occurs on a regular basis, but usually, the communication is ahead of time, as opposed to in the moment with a discipline slip. And the, and the administrators typically know that that student is going to be coming soon, because the teacher has kind of given them a warning. And then that student may be assigned, may have a consequence such as a phone call home directly from the administrator's office. It may be an office detention or two assigned. And on occasion, if the student has been disruptive more than several times in a particular class, they could be serving an instant suspension for frequently or consistently disrupting the educational environment. But the communication piece, I would say, is not as consistent as you mentioned, where we do have the discipline slips, but they may not go back by a two-day period, or they may not go back with the disposition. It may happen in a conversation, I took care of that student, they're in office detention today. Or I took care of that student, they're having a lunch detention for the next two days.
And then do the discipline people write that down and keep a record of it? When they're talking in the hallways, going by, do they remember to do that all the time? Um, I, do you know what I mean? Would it be easier to have something written, or is it, I don't know?
Well, it certainly is all tracked in our Aspen, in our discipline. That is all tracked, the number of incidents that a student is asked to leave a classroom, et cetera. So that is all tracked with the discipline reports that we have in our Aspen system. The conversation, could it be forgotten on a particular day, and then followed up another day or two days later? Perhaps.
Um, one thing that, I, I don't know if this is true or not, but this, when someone was talking to me about it, a parent, I said I would check on it. Our guidance counselors at the middle school each have hundreds, 300, 400 students?
They're assigned by house.
They're assigned by house.
They're aligned with the team and administrator. So for, for example, Mrs. Kilbride is aligned with Mrs. LaRoche, our guidance counselor, and they work with all of Explorer House and a team on discovery, and some of our special education programs. Mr. Sheen is aligned with Mrs. Horning. They work with all of Challenger and the rest of Discovery House. So the caseloads are high. We have 852 students, and we also have an additional guidance counselor who services students who are high-risk, those students that we were talking about earlier, and they perhaps have some social, emotional issues, and perhaps even some deeper mental health issues, which we're seeing more and more of at our age level.
Okay. The question I was going to ask was, in the end, do the guidance counselors get to see at least once a year all of the students?
I can understand that.
Because the parents said that their child never saw a guidance counselor in three years.
No.
So we don't look at guidance counselors that way?
They go into the sixth grade classrooms at the beginning of the sixth grade school year, and they introduce themselves to each of their houses individually in the classes, but there's quite a possibility that they have not met individually with their counselor. Absolutely.
Because see, that, I see that as aligning to MJ's concerns about outgoing, you know, being proactive, and what, I hate to keep bringing up, but it's my experience, that the guidance counselors, by first quarter, and I don't know how you do it, they, we had studies, I don't know how you could do it, but they had to have met with every one of their charges in that class.
This is at the high school level.
At the high school level.
We do that at the high school, not at the middle school level.
Yeah, you could, it's not.
It's a different, it's a different.
Different model, yes.
The case load is different.
Charge description.
The case load is different as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about if the guidance counselors come down to the lunchroom and walk around the lunchroom during lunch, and see who's being bullied? See who's not talking to who's, you know, stuff like that? See what's going on during the lunchroom?
They certainly do that on occasion, not as often as maybe they, they're usually tied up with students who may be having more heavy-duty problems. They attend all of the team meetings that parents come into with the teams, and they attend the IEP meetings that go on as well throughout the day. But that certainly could be a request from the administration, maybe with a number posed to it, that two times a week, that they're coming down to the different grade level lunches, just to be a face. We actually do have some of the school psychologists or the social worker come down, and they actually come in and observe particular students that either are on their caseload, or that teachers have said that they're concerned about, going back to your point, to observe. Are they interacting with students during lunch? Are they sitting by themselves, which is something that we try to avoid at all costs? Are they, are they extra active at lunch? Something like that. So they come in and do observations, and they also come down and say, say hello, and they greet kids, and they check in with kids. We often run social groups during lunchtime as well, and that's sometimes where the lunch bunches do take up the counselor's lunchtime as well, because they're meeting with students in a different forum. But we could actually put a number to that and talk to the guidance counselors about additional visibility in the cafeteria for the students to know who they are.
I would just think that they would see them with their pupils and say, okay, well, this one's not talking to this one, or, you know, this group right here, you know, let's try to get them in and talk to them, you know? Just to see them with everybody. I think that would be a great idea.
The children who are coming up on radar.
Yeah, yeah. That's always in.
I think it's another proactive approach, is kids who are coming up on radar, and, and taking it before something does occur, perhaps. Yeah? Yeah.
And they, they often do that in the morning, when we have our students arrive off the buses at seven o'clock, and they go into the cafeteria or the auditorium. The, the two of the counselors are in the cafeteria in the mornings, and they have an opportunity to interact with students then. And very often, they are in the hallways in between classes, and they may grab a student that they wanted to check in with, et cetera, in passing.
I don't want to lose that other piece about bullying, because I think the definition is key to identification.
I think it's going to come up, and, and it's come up since it's really.
If you could.
Yeah, sure. I had shared this with, earlier with Mrs. Benton. During this school year, we have had 31 incident reports, which are reports of perhaps the word bullying is used, perhaps the word assault is used, some sort of a conflict or a power differential. So 31 incident reports, of which, when investigated, five were determined to be bullying, because they fit the criteria of the definition per the bullying law, that it is either severe or repeated. And typically, repeated means at least three times with the particular student and with the aggressor and the target. In comparison, just to share with you, last year, last year in the 2012, 2013 school year, we had 20 incident reports, and six were to be, were determined to be bullying based on that same definition. And somebody else had asked the question earlier, was there follow-up or consequences? Students who were involved in those incidents, who were found to have been bullying, you know, we certainly follow the policy in the handbook, as well as the bullying prevention and intervention policy. Their parents are notified, they are typically assigned either detention, detentions plural, in-school suspension, and if it's beyond repeated, it, it could move to out-of-school suspension, as well as move on to harassment, which is a different category in the handbook.
Can I ask you two questions? And I, the total student suspensions that are reported has been 11. Are those out-of-school?
It's mixed.
It is mixed?
Combined.
Can you give me a guesstimate? I'm not gonna, I won't hold it to you black and white.
I would say it was...
I'm sorry, that was...
Seven out-of-school suspensions and four in-school suspensions. I'm pretty sure that's close. I don't have the list and the names right in front of me.
Not a problem. I have one more question for you. In your opinion, and just some feedback, as you know, I sit on the Subcommittee of Policy. How effectively do you feel that the policies that we do have currently in place are? And are there any kind of recommendations that you might be able to offer that would benefit the student body group that you currently are in charge of? Granted, that might be a discussion for that committee per se, but if you could give us just some perhaps insight of, I'm sure this is a discussion between you and your administrators probably have had over the course of these incidences and other possibilities that have occurred. And if Officer Fiori could also participate in that opinion, I'd greatly welcome it and appreciate it.
That's a difficult question. I mean, obviously, you know, looking at your policy book, it's quite large. And the policy I had mentioned earlier about the drug and the safety and wellness one is certainly something that I think works. I've seen it deter students from making the same choices again. I've seen parents get much more involved and invested when they feel that their child may be experimenting or using drugs and asking, you know, from the school nurses to the counselors for additional resources, perhaps outside of school counseling, which we definitely provide. Any of the other policies that we deal with or that are listed in the handbook seem to be operating appropriately for the age level because of the rubric that we have. We know we're dealing with middle school students. We know we're dealing with students who are impulsive because of their age level. And sometimes they do not think before they act or before they speak. And that is, I'd say, the predominant type of incident that we deal with. That someone says something to a classmate or a teacher that is inappropriate and perhaps even offensive and they wish they could take it back, but it already has come out of their mouth. Or perhaps actions, whether it's physicality, you know, in the handbook, hitting, poking, tripping, punching, those types of behaviors that are quick, perhaps in the hallway, perhaps in the cafeteria, that they act and if it's reported or if it's witnessed, it's dealt with. But if we don't know about it, we can't, we can't respond to it.
I'm just, I guess, feedback, getting effective feedback with regards to what is currently in place is something that I think, I know I don't, I know Superintendent Benton gives us her feedback and...
I think it's a good item to put on our leadership agenda with all the principals.
Take a look at the policy.
Take a look and bring some...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Could I also ask what, how you view the policy on, I'm thinking where the high school was a few years ago on electronic devices. I think we all know how I feel about electronic devices, but do, do you have an issue with them? I know coming in and out in the mornings and the afternoons that, I've been told there are quite a few electronic devices and the kids are talking to their parents who are right over here. And so the parents are not helping.
Sure. I certainly have seen students leaving the building. It's one forty, the bell has rung and they're leaving the building and they're already on the phone either with a parent or perhaps a friend as they're leaving to go and get on a bus. During the school day, I could, we, we keep a list in the office. When a cellphone is turned in or confiscated by a teacher because it went off in a classroom or because it was seen in the hallway or because the child was texting in the hallway, that is confiscated and it's brought down to the office. And the parent is supposed to come in on the first offense per the district policy. On occasion, if it is a safety issue, and that is a communication tool for the parent and the parent is not home and we've spoken to the parent or we've spoken to the student and they need that to communicate with their parent after school, on the first offense, we will allow a warning and have it go home with the child. Second offense, no. And then their name is documented and the parent has to come into the main office and pick it up and we document who gave it back to the parent. So I would say disruption-wise, I don't believe that the cellphones during the school day are a disruption and you guys could chime in. However, am I aware that students perhaps are taking pictures during the school day in various locations without permission? Yes? And perhaps even posting on Instagram during the school day? Or using a picture that was taken during the school day but posting perhaps later on? I would say much of the digital drama that we deal with at the middle school level from Instagram, Ask FM, Snapchat, Twitter and Facebook, happens outside of school. But we deal with the ramifications the following day or the following Monday after a weekend if it has created problems between students. Students feeling intimidated, students feeling hurt, students feeling disrespected. So the policy, the way we have it, does work in our school. However, looking forward and right now, if a teacher had a particular project that was directly correlated to curriculum and they needed to have the students use it as a learning tool, they get my permission ahead of time and I give them clearance to use it for a special project that perhaps lasts for a day or two days and that project is over. But we have not had any problems with those students who are using it under the direction of a teacher. But again, it's on a case-by-case and a class-by-class basis because we don't have the same policy as the high school. I think there's going to come a time that we are not going to be able to control that even at the middle school level because we are hoping to invite and we're gonna get a flyer out shortly for the thirtieth, parents from grades four through twelve to that staying wired, staying connected in a wired world, which is the DA's office's presentation. You know, students as young as fourth and fifth grade are having cellphones and are starting to enter this realm of the digital drama with the posting and the Instagram. So it's starting much younger. So we want to be able to support all the parents with a program like that. But I think there's going to come a time that if we ever move to a BYOD type of a district that we're gonna have to focus on students using the tools for the positive and for the learning and, and hold them accountable when they're using it for bullying, cyberbullying, ostracizing, all of those negative behaviors.
And we're hoping that the parents will help support us by taking their child's phone at night. I used to do it, looking at it. It's our responsibility to help them make good decisions. And if they are using it improperly, we're hoping that parents will support us and take it away. The language, I have to reiterate, the language that these students are using on the internet is horrifying to me. It is, they are words that I was never allowed to use ever and they're using it. And it's your children, it's our children and we really need to, to, to let them know that. I know it's said all the time, but it's true. It will follow them. It will follow them. It does not go away. I heard a presentation by the District Attorney, Marion Ryan, this morning. She said, you know, parents and students will say to her, "Well, you know, I could take it down on Instagram." No, it does not get removed from Instagram. It is there. It will follow them along. And it, it, it can end up hurting them when it comes to going out into the real world.
Well, they go and apply and I've heard of some instances where they've applied for scholarships. And you don't know this, but the scholarship committee has gone through and they take them right out of the bunch. So they can't, they, they never get up there, but you don't think it has anything to do with it, but it has to do with their Facebook pages and it's just upsetting. Mrs. Carol?
What is the protocol on informing the parents of any of these incidents?
Um, I think that's something that we certainly have taken on a case-by-case basis. In the past, if we have had a weapon in the building, I have notified parents so that they are aware. With the case of the erroneous article in the newspaper, I deliberated on whether or not to send something out to the parents to say, "This did not occur on school grounds" because it had not. However, I did not have all of the facts to say what did happen. So it was very difficult and it was going into a weekend. And on occasion, when you send home an email to say there was perhaps a fistfight in the building today or perhaps there was a weapon, our student was in possession of a weapon and it was not brandished or it was not used, it does cause other concerns, of course, with parents. And it also highlights the individuals that were involved, which is concerning as well. So I have informed parents in the past when similar incidents have occurred. On this particular occasion, in the past two weeks, I did not.
My opinion on is that is the kids are gonna come home and tell their parents. So I'd rather hear it from the school, not from my child. Because God knows where that information even came from, from my child. I don't trust them. I don't trust this one.
Sometimes they have pieces of the information.
You know, I wanna hear it from the adult. Your adult, you tell me what happened at my school, at the school today. That's how I feel about that.
And I think even with that, because of the sensitivity behind it, whether it be the weekend or not, and just saying that it's been reported such and such, it's still being investigated at this point. That's all I can offer you. Even that reaching out because to get that from another adult so that they, parents have a better perspective with regards to just some inclination as to how they might address that conversation over that weekend is... You know, it's a collaboration between the school and the parent. I think it only helps with regards to what you need to try to do.
And then they can fill out their own child too, what happened, who was there, you know? Some kids don't go home and tell their parents anything and some kids tell everything. So at least you can, you know, talk to your kid, what happened here, you know? Were you involved? Were you near? You know, and then you can know the type of kids that your child's hanging out with too, hearing about it too.
And most of all, do you feel safe?
Exactly. Do you feel safe? And trust me, I know six, seven, eight is a hard grade. They are hard, hard kids. Everybody who says, "Where do you work?" middle school, oh God, help you. I said, "I know," you know? But, you know, we have to get a hold of it. We have to, you know, fill them out and I think from our point of view, if you guys feel that you need help in the hallways, in the stairways, anywhere, come to us. Come to Mrs. Benton and say, "Hey, can we get extra help here? Can we, how about the PAC? Wakefield, their PAC helps them out in the playground, in the parking lots. Lunchroom, they go in their lunchroom and they take lunchroom duty, Wakefield's PAC." I think that's great. Let's ask our PAC, you know, during MCAS, all the teachers are being very well-used doing MCAS. Ask the PAC, can some parents come in and help us out? Stay in the hall, yep, stay in the hallways where we can't be, you know, cafeteria before in the morning, after, anywhere.
So with regard to the communication, would that be a district-wide policy?
Do we have a policy for that?
That all the buildings would communicate incidents that would occur?
Actually, that's what I wrote down, to put it on the agenda for the leadership. I think we should develop one. And then bring it to the Safety Committee.
We've been going back and forth for a long time now, should we have told that? Should we have told that? For a while there, she would tell me and I wouldn't, I'd just hold on to it. And then some members of the school community would find out and then they get all upset, I didn't pass it on. But you didn't pass it on because it was so sensitive and it was, not that you didn't trust everybody, but it probably shouldn't have even come to me at that point. But you don't, it's a difficult, so if we had some kind of a set policy on that, that would be, that would really be helpful for us as well as for you.
And it, it could get tricky from time to time. We would have to still discuss incidents, you know, if there were a medical issue where a student was in an ambulance and left the building, that causes concern for some parents. But that's certainly not something that we can share and bring attention to that child's medical situation. So we would have to be very careful when we discuss it at leadership.
I will gladly do that.
Great.
Do we have any other?
I have a second question regarding the data chart that we were given. I guess I was pleasantly surprised that the numbers have come down. I had this assumption in my head that was wrong, so I was, I was pleased to see with the numbers. But what do you attribute the decline in suspensions to? Obviously, we have a School Resource Officer and I'm sure he's quite active and there's an awareness there, but what else?
Um, we've discussed that actually over the past couple of weeks because, you know, most of us have lived through the previous years. Not the first year, that was the first year before I arrived. But we certainly see trends and we certainly see specific personalities that develop in a particular grade. In discussing our current student body of eight hundred and fifty-two students, you could literally count on a hand the number of students who are exhibiting these at-risk behaviors that are concerning to us enough that they would be suspendable offenses. So many times it depends on the exact population you have in the building at the time. And one class goes out and one class goes in and that could change the dynamic of the building.
I'd also like to point out that the size of the school, when there were a hundred and sixty-six suspensions, there were two hundred and twelve more students in the school. So, you know, frankly, if I had my druthers, I've said this every year when they talk about the setup of schools, I think smaller schools serve our students better. And I harking back to the K to eight schools where students, older students were used as role models for younger students and you don't have all of the students of that age that are the most impulsive in the same building. Now, you know, it's interesting because there was a shift fifteen years ago when they said, you know, it's better to put all the middle school students together. But I believe as the number of students in the school goes down, it allows staff and administration to have better, more personal contact with the number of students in the building. So that's one of the pieces. Can I say, make one other comment? We, in my ten years here, we have had a chain of command chart. And we encourage parents and community members to call teachers, to call principals, to call central office if there's an issue. It's very frustrating for me to sit here and hear that the school committee is getting all of these calls and information when I hear this information and I don't know what they're talking about. I really hope you as a school committee do your job as well and encourage anybody that talks to you, tell them they need to come to us. Because if we don't know what's going on out there, we cannot clarify it. And it, it's not fair to the middle school or any school if you have information that's out there that they need to know about. So please, and the policy always is, if a parent is uncomfortable meeting with the teacher, the principal will step in and, and sit with the parent and the teacher. Same thing if the principal, a parent is uncomfortable talking with the principal, assistant superintendent can step in. I can step in. We need to hear what's going on out in the community as well. And we prefer to hear it directly because it's not fair to put you in that, that situation. Because the unfortunate piece is, it's now third-hand information. And now we have to go back and try and figure out what the real truth is. So I really encourage the community, if you have issues, call the schools.
I can speak to that just a bit more, is that I spoke to three parents personally who did call and ask questions about the article in the newspaper as well as incidents that they had heard about from their children. And I know Officer Fiori spoke to one parent as well who called the school and said, "Can you give me the straight story and give me the facts?" And then to Joanne's point, any rumor that goes around the building regarding safety, whether it be weapons, drugs, any type of rumor of an altercation, each and every safety rumor is followed up by one of the four of us. And it does not go undiscussed, it is not swept under the rug. It is investigated to its fullest potential. And then we take action on it or we communicate that information of our findings to Mrs. Benton. So we do follow up every rumor, especially if it has to do with safety. And that takes time. Thank you.
Can you explain to us the procedure? Can we address, or can you address us, or-
We have one of the emails.
Instead of leaving us sitting here without-
Um, I, I-
Procedure off for what?
Public comment. Public comment.
I would, I would like to, I would like to just clarify something. Also, I think there's a little bit of miscommunication, so I just wanna be able to address it.
I also came as well tonight as a parent, and I was one of the three phone calls to the principal-
Right.
-um, with some concerns regarding the safety of the middle school.
I think there's some confusion in everything that we're hearing, so-
Yeah, I think there's some-
That's why I want, that's why I would like to be able to speak.
There's a missing piece going on.
Um, normally, we wait until public comments, but this, we will move public comments to our next item. Does anyone, do any of you have any more questions right now? Well, public comments, could you please identify yourself?
Sure. So, my name is Deb Smith. I am a parent of five children, two who have graduated from Wilmington Public Schools, two who are students in the middle school, and one who is in the Woben Street, in, in the third grade. Um, let me start off by saying, first and foremost, I don't play the rumor game. I don't listen to it, I think it's useless, and I think that's where a lot of miscommunication is coming in. I don't think there's a lot of rumor that's involved with me being here. My biggest concern is the lack of communication from the administration at the middle school. So, being a parent of five children, when my son was in the high school, there was a similar, we'll say, incident, you know, where the parents were notified immediately. I think if there's any point in time where my child's safety, now whether your definition of their safety and mine may be entirely different, I'm a very aggressive, hands-on parent. My two children that are at the middle school, the one in the eighth grade is oblivious, doesn't even bother him, not even a problem. My child that's in the sixth grade, completely different temperament, totally bothered by it. And what's bothersome to me is, I'm a parent, I deserve the right to know. I don't know anything about a newspaper article, I don't know anything about that. I don't care about anyone's name, but if something is going on, I'm the parent. I'm entrusting you with my children. I deserve to be informed. With the two incidents, the, the one where the school was evacuated, and the last one just a couple of weeks ago, I understand that they're doing the best that they can, that I, I'm not putting blame on anyone, but you have to understand where the parents are coming from. And it's not, like, I, I feel like more is being said that it's based on rumor, it's based on hearsay, or, you know, that's not, and, right, and statistics, that's not what it's about. A, a simple, quick email, just saying, "We had a situation today, it was addressed. If you have any questions, certainly contact me." When you don't do that, you open up the door, and you are now being questioned. Now, now you're credibility here, like, you know, and then saying rumor, 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 like, that, that's not okay. If you quit, if you simply just sent it out right away to the parents, whether it was a weekend, I mean, it doesn't matter, then it would put people more at ease. I, I'm definitely not, I mean, I have, my kids have all come to the school.
I think we addressed that, I think we addressed that this evening, when we said that we would put a protocol-
Well, you know, how, there is no policy, because then I'm, then I'm even more concerned. There isn't a procedure and policy in reference to that, in today's society?
Yeah, I would like to back her up. As a parent, my name is Rebecca Anthony, I have a child in the seventh grade. Uh, the school was evacuated recently, and there was an incident in the school with a weapon involved. And, I found out about the weapon through my child. I think that's extremely inappropriate. If you want parent involvement, I think that you have to come to us and let us be aware of the situation that's going on. I think that if the school's evacuated, we are entitled to a follow-up on what the situation was, and how it got handled. We are not looking for names, we are not looking for statistics. And to me, quite frankly, the statistics don't matter. It takes one fight with one knife.
That's right.
I think that there needs to be a policy of over-communication with the parents, and there isn't any. I do not need to hear from my seventh grader that there was a fight involving a knife in the Wilmington Middle School. I think that is highly inappropriate. I get a note home when my child has lice, but I don't get a note home if there was a weapon in the school. It's inappropriate.
I would say, I think that, one, um, I totally agree with you, but on the other hand, I would say, two, thank God, this is new to Wilmington. We haven't had, we have not dealt with, I, I don't believe we've dealt with this before. And so, thank, thank God, that our kids have not, it's just starting, we're gonna nip this in the bud, hopefully, that, um, people all over are dealing with these kinds of things. But, as, as you, as you're saying, it just takes that one time, so that first time, something could happen. But we, the administration definitely needs time. I would say, they, they got the message tonight, that if something happens in the middle school, we will all know, at least in some kind of a form.
But you're also asking for parental involvement, and for parents not to listen to rumors, and how to stop the rumors, but I, you know, without pointing fingers, I think some of the rumors are to blame, if you're not gonna tell us.
Right.
We don't have any other information about our children. I, like Mrs. Carroll's dad, would like to hear from an adult what's going on, not my child.
In defense of that, I also want to just point out that I'm well-aware of the fact that there are five parents sitting here. And there are eight hundred and something students in the middle school. So, when you're asking for parent invol- I get that also. So, like you, like, obviously, there was a big rumor mill about it, but if it was such a concern, you're looking at five parents. So, I understand the problem, and I don't want it, I don't want it to come off that I don't. I understand that they're doing the best they can. I just think the communication, that's something that definitely has to be addressed.
There needs to be a policy for the communication.
Right, that's all.
We hear you.
Even a phone letter, I fully understand that with the evacuation, there was police following up. Then let us know that, we know nothing. Just send a note home, or a, an alert now, and say, "Yes, the school, you know, was evacuated for whatever reason. It's now in the hands of the police department, refer all inquiries there." Just let us know, we, we don't, we don't know.
And I apologize, too.
I'm very proactive, not reactive. I don't wanna be here.
I did think there was a procedure in place, so I apologize for, due to the fact that the high school was evacuated three years ago, I did believe that there was a procedure in place, so that, if, had I, had I known that there was not, then that would be different.
We, I, I, it, it's been, frankly, on a case-by-case.
Right.
And I go by what the police tell me to do.
Yep.
Because in some cases, um, it is out of my control, and I would rather have the police making the decision. But I hear what you're saying tonight, and we truly appreciate you coming here. That's why this is on the agenda, and we will make adjustments in how we communicate. Um, as I said earlier, I learned from the middle school, we did send out a message about the evacuation. A parent called me that afternoon, right away, I emailed all the principals and said, "From now on, if it's a case of an emergency, we need to do not the email, but the phone." So, I, I, I hear you.
And, and the text, as well.
In the texting.
That will help. And I appreciate, I appreciate you allowing us to-
Yeah, no, I, I-
Yeah, express our concern.
I, I, I hear you, and-
And I agree, it takes all of us, it takes the teachers, and the students, and the parents, but you have to let us know what's going on.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it.
I wanna thank the middle school administration.
Yes.
It's not an easy job. It's not a, a job that, um, it's a special calling to be a, a middle school administrator. It really is, I, I'm, I'm making this up. I mean, everybody will say it, because it takes a special type of person to deal with, um-
That's true.
-that age group. And I, I thank all of you, and I have to say that, um, I know that I'm thrilled to have Officer Fury at the middle school. He's done an outstanding job of reaching out to the students, I, and, um, assisting the administration and me. So, thank you, thank you all.
Thanks. Well, so, oh, Mr. Mullis?
I just wanted to thank the parents for the feedback. I, I do not have children in the middle school, so I'm not hearing a lot of what's going on, so I do appreciate you coming in. I'm sure we all feel the same, that we're, we're certainly gonna work towards, uh, that policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it, yeah.
Welcome to stay.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay. Okay, um, our next item.
Uh, it's the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen tal- proposed calendar. I recommend the approval of, this is just, just at the start of school, in the vacations.
From two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, first, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This one makes sense.
And can we just mention on that, this is the one where-
No.
We won't, it's the next year?
It's the next one. This is the one for two years from now.
Oh, two years from now, okay. Okay, sixteen. That's two years from now, do we have a motion?
This is so people can plan their vacation.
Mrs. Burns, I make a motion to approve the proposed calendar for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
Second, Mrs. Carroll, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Um, I, we have a new two thousand fourteen, fifteen calendar in front of you, uh, with, uh, three changes. Thank you to whoever on school committee pointed out that, um, January second was gonna be a day, a school day, and it doesn't make sense to open for one day, so that is now a holiday, we added a day at the end. Also, come to a tentative agreement with the, uh, Teachers Association on the high school. The day before February vacation, the thirteenth will be a half-day for the high school students. And, uh, the twenty-third will be no school for the high school students, and they will go an extra day in June to make up for that day. This is due to the move to the new high school.
And this sounds crazy, but I would, didn't, wasn't quite understanding, the entire schools will be going, the entire high school will be going to the, that day, over to the new high school?
On the twenty-fourth, yes, right, on the twenty-fourth.
Not just to see any class? But we'll have something special though, too, okay?
Just a clarifying question, um, so the nineteenth will be the last day for the high school, and not for the other schools, yes?
Other schools, it's eighteen.
Okay, just wanna make.
'Cause we have to add, we're adding a day to the calendar, 'cause they have to have one hundred eighty days.
I bet they won't even care, when they see that building, it's gorgeous. So, um, I have a motion to approve the two thousand fourteen, fifteen calendar. Mrs. Burshad?
Make a motion to approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen calendar.
And, second, Mr. Mullis, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
We have, um, three articles on the, uh, town meeting floor, town warrants, Article six, ten, and eleven. One is the purchase of two student vans. One is, uh, to vote to appropriate, uh, funds for technology improvements. And, uh, Article eleven is to raise, uh, funds for, uh, technology improvements at the, middle school, I'm sorry. The, Article ten is for the Woben Street, Shoshine, North and West. And Article eleven is for the middle school. And I'd like a motion to support, for you to support these three articles going forward.
Okay, we want to take a motion, Mr. Mullis?
Uh, make a motion to support Articles six, ten, and eleven at the town warrant.
Okay, second, Mrs. Burshad, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Annually, the school committee is required to, um, vote on school choice. And, uh, this vote determines whether the school committee will participate in the two schools, state school choice program for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. Uh, since nineteen ninety-four, the legislature enacted the program, the school committees have to annually vote not to participate. I am recommending, at this point, um, not to participate in the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. Uh, we, we lack available space at the elementary grades, and I, it's, uh, we need to wait and see about the high school, because, as I told you before, we have, um, I think it's seventy-one less applicants to the, um, Shoshine Vocational School this year, so we're gonna be having more students coming back to the high school, which is great. So, I, I recommend that you vote not to participate in the state, state school choice program at this time.
All right, um, I'll make a motion, uh, Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve, uh, motion to move that the Wilmington School Committee vote not to participate in the state schools' choice program, 'cause of lack of available space to accommodate out-of-town students.
Second, Mrs. Burns, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right, let's see. What's your, you have the school lunch, where is it?
Yeah, school lunch, increase in food prices. We're asking, uh, the school committee to approve an increase of twenty cents for all students and adult lunches.
And, I, I'll just remind the committee that last year, when this came up, this is not Mary Palin, and it's not us trying to increase the prices. It was done by the state. Our prices were so low, that, uh, they told us we had to raise them, can you believe it? But that's how it is. So, we're doing it over three years, is this, we have one more year after this?
It, it's ordered to bring the, the, the lunch price closer to the difference between the free federal reimbursement and the federal reimbursement for paid lunches. It's crazy.
I don't know how they have to get the money in the end, they don't, though.
I recommend favorable action.
Okay, um, could we, um, have a motion to up the prices? Oh, should we, did we say what they were?
Twenty cents.
Twenty cents.
We have to look to this side, they keep raising the head.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Mrs. Mullis?
Uh, I make a motion to approve the twenty cent increase to student and adult lunches for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year.
Okay, do we have a second, Dr. Quick? Be quick. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay.
Last day of school, I move, I'm hoping that, um, spring is upon us, and assuming no more postponed days to remain to the school year, the hundred and eightieth school day will fall on June eighteenth. I recommend a half-day for students, a full-day for staff.
All right, could we have a motion for that, last day of school? Oh, I found it. There's a lot of papers this time.
Move to approve June eighteen, two thousand fourteen, with the hundred and eighth day of school for the two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen school year.
And, Dr. Quick, last time she get to do this.
I'm not doing that one.
Oh, second.
Second, yeah.
Oh, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And this is the last one.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, back in the eighties, the Wilmington School Committee, um, actually voted to turn the Whitfield over, school back over to the town, but we cannot find the, um, minutes of the vote. So, just as a, uh, legality, the town manager asked us to, um, re-vote it, so that it can be put into the record. The school was turned over to the town, it was used, in fact, for public, buildings used it, um, and, uh, Lynn Morrison worked in it, uh, I think recreation was there for a little bit, but, um, the school system decided that they, uh, didn't, it was surplus. So, there is a recommended motion, uh, put out by John Foskett.
Okay, who wants to read?
Can you just say someone? Can I ask questions pertaining to it? Is this, because it doesn't exist, is this considered a mute topic, since there's no record of the vote, as a revisiting as to whether or not this building is considered surplus?
Um-
And, because I know, the town manager, you know, Hall, did, uh, discuss it at the last meeting we were presenting, I think, our, our, our budget, about conducting a feasibility study on a variety of different buildings, has to determine, um, determine it, and, and that's just my, I hate, I mean, I-
I, 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 I can tell you that I have been in the building, I would never, ever recommend that you ask to have it back, because it, 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 it is not a facility that would, I, the money it would take to, to, to refurbish it, is not worth it.
Any guess as to what that money looks like?
I think it's around three million dollars.
Around three million? I'm just thinking with regards to the, the goals, um, we have for the future, whether or not, uh, MSBA, or even working conjunction with the Historical Society, with regards to using it, and, you know, it, but making it, I mean, it would have to be, um, I don't wanna create it to be a handicap, but to use it as a possible consideration for, um, you know, a central office at some point. But, I, I just didn't know if, if that at all is, I mean, is it falling on inside of itself, kinda thing?
Uh, it's actually, it's, I, I mean, they, they, it's not safe, it's not safe.
I think that's why they took some of the administrative offices, some of the-
They took them out, right, right.
That took them out, because it was not safe.
That's exactly what, yeah.
That's what was brought to, to me, I asked around.
'Cause I haven't, I haven't seen any documentation pertaining to the bad piece, and I, I just wanna try to explore.
The school committee minutes from, those years back are on microfiche. I mean, we have worked as hard as we can, talked to school committee members, who recall the vote, but, um, I'm, just so to cover school committee, that's why we're just asking you to retake the vote tonight.
All right, Dr. Quick.
All right, Dr. Quick. I move that the Wilmington School Committee, in accordance to, with General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen A, determine that the land shown on Map nine of the Wilmington Assessor's map- Assessor's Map Seventy-Nine and the building located on that same map and parcel are surplus and no longer needed for any purposes of the Wilmington School Department. That the committee notify the Board of Selectment of this determination, and that the care, custody, and control of the property and building shall therefore be transferred to the Wilmington Board of Selectment under the management of the town manager in accordance to Chapter Five Ninety-Two of the Acts of 1950 as amended and referred to as the Town Managers Act.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Um, Mrs. Carroll, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
That's so good. We have a bittersweet moment tonight. This is Dr. Quick's last official meeting on the school committee. We are going to miss you. Really. Um, she has been involved in so much, it's incredible. She took right off running with, um, the subcommittees. You're still on, after all these years, the, um, I always call it the Dorian Crowe Committee. She's such a, the help...
Wellness, health and wellness, yes, health and wellness subcommittee and the wealth and, those are the ones that I talk to.
Hopefully, if you are interested in continuing some work with them, that would be fine with us.
Oh, absolutely. I am excited to stay. I unfortunately cannot stay on the health and wellness committee, but I'm sure we'll find somebody spectacular to take over in that seat. But, um, absolutely, I'm currently the vice president of the board and wanna stay, stay on. It's a wonderful, I mean, we were so excited to be able to do these, these grants and, you know, and, and again, and that takes the, that takes the coordination of the entire community and our, and the staff and, and, you know, it's, it's a wonderful group, and I definitely wanna stay involved in that.
And we wish you and your husband really well in your quick chiropractic.
Oh, thank you.
I, I had met Dr. Quick prior to that because she absolutely made my back all better. So, we just want to say thank you so much for everything. And you will be with us next week. We're not letting you out of that.
I will, I will. You know, I, it's kinda funny because next week's gonna be a ball, right? So, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you for walking back. I'd just like to take the opportunity from a superintendent's perspective to thank you, Leslie, for all that you've done. I admire your willingness to call me if you heard something and to, um, get this, get the truth behind the story. Your incredible, um, wealth of information to support the Wellness Committee and all the work that's, has evolved from that committee over the years with, in fact, now the drug, uh, survey that's now going on at the, at the high school in regard to the middle school and the changes to the, um, school lunch program. You certainly played a, a vocal role in that, and I appreciate it immensely. And I will never forget the costume that you, you and our team wore this year as a Wilmington Educational Foundation spelling bee. If they gave our prizes, I think your group would get it. But there's one other thing that Leslie's been involved in, that I know she's doing more as a parent than as a school committee member, and I, I do hope that, um, you will continue it and we can find a way to, um, to, to increase participation, but that's destination imagination. How many, many long hours you have put into that, and we thank you for that as well. So, I mean, I couldn't ask for a better school committee member to work with, and I thank you for maybe as a service.
Thank you. And, um, I really wanna, first of all, just, uh, Mrs. Benton, I mean, you know, one of the things that being on the school committee, you know, I realized, I'm not an educator. My job is to be here as, as, you know, kind of the checks and balances of the, of the administration, and, um, you've always been, when I ask a question, literally, you know, I get an answer with it. It's amazing, within five, ten minutes typically, I mean. And, you know, I never, not being an educator myself, um, you know, I've brought hopefully some, you know, benefit as far as my, um, you know, clearly my health and wellness background, but also as, as an owner of a business and knowing what it's like to run, run the show. But I know also that, you know, I've always come into everything looking at it, trying to be as objective as possible, realizing that it's not my job to run the school, it's my job to let the, the experts do their jobs and, and hopefully be there to support them. So, um, I just wanna thank you, thank everybody so much for, you know, being supportive of us and me, and I hope I was able to do that for you. Thank you.
And it's ironic that, um, in the end, you're leaving when we're doing the number one thing that we do.
I, I have to admit, I mean, I already warned my husband, next week I'm gonna be an absentee mom, and, you know, he's got, and I'm not probably gonna be a bear, but, um, I'm actually very excited to have that as my last official duty is to, I feel very confident, um, that we have a, you know, great group of candidates, and I'm excited to be able to be there for that vote, so, hopefully. Fingers crossed.
Okay, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Um, can I?
Oh, yes. Sorry.
You think I'm not gonna let you get away so quickly? Um, just a little legislative, um, update with regards to my favorite topic of park.
I'm sorry, I forgot about this.
No. I know you're trying to get away from it, but, um, just a couple of happenings, um, on, um, that piece, a, um, a couple of weeks ago, the Worcester School Committee and the District of Worcester, um, did allow parents to opt out of the pilot piece. And recently, um, as of today, uh, the PBD School Committee has made notice to, on the MASC website, that they are creating a letter, um, and they're going to send it to the Ethics Commission with regards to Commissioner Chester's, um, multiple roles in park as being the chairman of this coalition, uh, as it applies to a conflict of interest with him being commissioner of the Board of Education here in Massachusetts. And the position is to, um, he's taken with, um, strongly encouraging districts to do the park pilot without, um, option. I'm gonna say it tactfully. I would like, I bring that up only, as you know, at one of the last meetings, we discussed, and I will still pursue this piece regarding the funding piece for this pilot testing, as, um, I'd like to at least plant the seeds. I know that the PBD School Committee, um, is looking for additional support from other school committee members to lend, um, their voices to the possible conflict of interest that is occurring, that could be occurring. Um, I think we, it does warrant careful consideration, um, with regards to, I think that's PBD's answer to reacting to what they feel, um, and, and speaking with one of the school committee members, it's not that they're against park, it's, I think, all in the implementation and the, and the huge gaps and lack of information, lack of participation in this process to create, you know, Massachusetts' next possible assessment tool. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, if, you know, through your day, if you've read something in the paper and it comes up, just to think about it, because it, it will come up, um, probably at a future meeting, uh, discussed as an agenda item, um, as to if the committee feels it should be any additional action that I could do on behalf of the committee, uh, on top of the funding aspect, which I think is kind of a mute piece with regards to priorities to what's, I mean, steering up, just to throw that out to everybody. So, but thank you.
And I think of the position where we are, when I first saw that, I went, "Oh, wow." That, I was very impressed with PBD. But in the position we're in right now, in bringing on board a new educational leader, um, I think it would be unfair at this point to go much further in that area until the person, um, is able to discuss with us his or her ideas on that area. So, I think, not that we don't wanna go further, and we may go further, but I think we have to give ourselves another month.
Oh, I think, I think there will be, uh, and I think that type of information can, you know...
And we do need to have it, so, yes, it's important that you give it to us.
Um, but the other aspect is that, um, every year, as you know, Massachusetts, um, Committee Association of School Committees has a Day on the Hill, which is Tuesday, April 29th. Um, this year appears to be a, bit more of a conference, um, where they're, um, they're doing, um, they're really pushing how to advocate, um, and they're also holding a, um, Advocacy Saturday at Tantasqua Regional in Sturbridge, uh, I think that's their high school on May 12th. I will be following up with, um, our representatives pertaining to topics of Chapter Seventy, Special Education Circuit, BRCA funding, the typical that usually comes up on their radar every year. So, um, anybody who has any comments or any questions you'd like me to ask with regards to any areas, even as it applies to our transitions that we'll be coming up to, please do let me know, but I will probably be following up with our representatives more informally and not just taking, um, Tuesday. I, I might just show up and just, you know, arrange meetings in that aspect. I just find if last-minute things just fall apart and, yeah, I don't think it'd be conducive to narrowing it down just one day, per se.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Um, I just, I was negligent. Any correspondence? Nope, Jenny's absent, and she didn't give me any. Um, future meeting dates and agenda items? We know that next week we have the 14th, 15th, and 16th, and that, four, no, and not